Welcome and thank you for joining us this evening. I am now calling the August 18, 2020, Business Meeting of the Yakima School District Board of Directors to order.
Bienvenidos. Gracias por estar con nosotros esta tarde. Estoy llamando la reunión de la Mesa Directiva para la reunión del 18 de agosto de 2020.
Our interpreter for this meeting is Mr. Jose Chavez from Center Point Language Services.
El intérprete para esta reunión esta noche será el señor Jose Chavez de Center Point Language Services.
Welcome and thank you, Mr. Chavez, for being with us today.
Bienvenido y gracias, señor Chavez, por estar con nosotros el día de hoy. Thank you very much.
Yes, and so everybody knows, as well as you, Mr. Chavez, the process will be as follows. All participants, including myself, will speak in English. And then you, Mr. Chavez, will interpret in Spanish. And hopefully, there's a pause or a break, so that there could be a nice segue there. This will allow for our community to speak, that speaks Spanish only, to participate in our meeting this evening. And I ask that Trevor and Mr. Chavez, that you interrupt me, or any board members, you interrupt me if I forget the process, Mr. Chavez.
Para que todos sepan el proceso que se va a utilizar en esta reunión. Será que todos hablarán en inglés, harán una pausa y permitirán que el señor Chavez pueda interpretar lo que se ha dicho. De esta manera permitirá que los miembros de la comunidad participen y escuchen y entienden. Voy a pedir que señor Trevor o el señor Chavez me pueden interrumpir si es que hay necesidad de hacer una pausa.
Thank you. We will now move to roll call. Jennifer, roll call, please.
Ahora vamos a pasar para la llamada de la lista. Jennifer, por favor, hagan la llamada.
Don Davis Jr.
Present.
Graciela Vinaueva.
Present.
Martha Rice.
Here.
Raymond Navarro Jr.
Here.
Norm Walker.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Superintendent Green is also joining this meeting today. And he'll have additional staff presenting to the board. Trevor, could you please introduce members of your team, please?
Gracias, Jennifer. El patrio estará aquí, está Green estará aquí. Y también van a presentar a miembros del Consejo. Trevor, puede hacer su deber, por favor.
Gracias, señor Chavez. Yes, thank you. Our cabinet leaders here tonight, we have Assistant Superintendent of HR Anthony Murrieta.
Tenemos a Asistente al Superintendente de Recursos Humanos, Anthony Murrieta.
Our interim Executive Director of Finance, Becky Neeson.
Tenemos el que está en el interno de Finanzas, Becky Neeson.
Our Executive Director of Equity, Partnerships and Student Engagement, Marcus Pimpleton.
El señor Marcus Pimpleton, que es el Director de Equidad y Participación Estudiantil.
Our Chief Legal Counsel, Bob No.
El jefe de abogado representándonos es Bob No.
We have our Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Stacy Locke.
Tenemos a Stacy Locke, que es Asistente al Superintendente de Operaciones.
And our Chief Communications Officer, Kirsten Fitterer.
Y Kirsten Fitterer, que es el jefe oficial de operaciones.
And not forgotten is our Deputy Superintendent, Rob Darling.
Lo queremos pasar por alto al Superintendente deputado, Rob Darling.
And I love the translation that Mr. Chavez gave, señor Chavez, of our chief legal counsel. They called him jefe, which is the boss. Congratulations, Bob.
Mi traducción que hizo el señor Chavez, que es el jefe de los abogados, te felicito, Bob.
Boss of the lawyers.
Alguno de los abogados.
Thank you, Trevor. Appreciate it. Jefe.
Gracias, Trevor. Apreciamos esto.
Next, we do have the Pledge of Allegiance. And the board would invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Jennifer, could you please post colors on the screen?
Enseguida vamos a tener el saludo de la bandera, que todos se pongan de pie. Jennifer puede poner la bandera.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I just want to make a few comments before we start our meeting. This meeting, or this virtual meeting, is being remote, is remote. Excuse me. This virtual meeting is remote per Governor Inslee's proclamation, 20.28.8, we're at version 8 now, of the Open Public Meetings Act and Public Records Act, prohibiting public agencies from conducting meetings subject to Public Open Meetings Act in person to curtail the spread of COVID-19. And as you may know, Governor Inslee extended, has been extending the waivers, and this one ends September 1, 2020. And we'll see if it is extended again. To the members of the public, want to thank you for being here and joining us today. We thank you for your support and your interest in the Yakima School District. We will not be...
Could I have a pause, please?
Yes, okay, thank you.
Bienvenidos a nuestra reunión, que estamos llevando a cabo de manera remota. Esto es en conformidad con la proclamación que hizo el gobernador Inslee, 2028.8. Ya estamos en la Cambio.8. Este es donde prohibían las agencias públicas que, para no esparcir el termine a COVID-19, el 1 de septiembre de 2020, los miembros del, gracias a los miembros del público que están presentes y los damos la bienvenida.
Thank you. The board will not be asking members of the committee to identify themselves. And per the board's action taken on February 17, 2020, there will not be an opportunity for public comment.
El Consejo no va a pedir que los miembros de la comunidad se identifiquen. Y de acuerdo con los, lo que se ha dicho, no habrá oportunidad para comentarios del público.
As always, comments are from the public are invited to the board by email. You can send those directly to our superintendent.
Como es siempre debido, se les animan los miembros del público que envíen por correo electrónico sus comentarios al superintendente y serán bien recibidos.
I'm also on a side note here, I'm also seeing that we do have Yakima School District faculty, staff and administrators, so I do want to also welcome you and thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of Yakima students.
También veo que hay miembros de la personal escolar de Yakima. Quiero darles las gracias y por darle la bienvenida y gracias por todo el servicio que proveen a los estudiantes.
I like what Graciela did. How about everybody, let's give it applause for all our faculty, staff and our administrators, right?
Un aplauso.
That's awesome.
Asümbrus.
Yes. Thank you. They're the ones that are on the front lines and doing the day-to-day work for the district. So we really appreciate all you do.
Ellos están en las líneas delanteras y hacen el trabajo diariamente. Apreciamos todo lo que ustedes hacen para los estudiantes.
To facilitate this meeting, I ask the participants, remember to pause and/or mute their mics after speaking to give others, especially our interpreter, the cue that they can speak.
Para facilitar esta reunión, le animo a todos a que pausen después de hablar o pongan en silencio sus micrófonos para darle la clave al intérprete y que sepan cuándo va a hablar.
Also, there'll be times, and I already did it today, when I'll miss, I'll speak too fast or miss, not pause enough long enough to give our interpreter the opportunity to speak. So if I do that, just please interrupt me and so I can recognize you and give the time for your remarks or questions.
Y yo ya soy culpable de haberlo hecho una vez ahora. Tenemos que pausar y permitir que el intérprete haga su trabajo, por favor. Me recuerden para darle la oportunidad a que tenga sus comentarios.
Thank you. So next, we're going to move on to, next on our agenda, we do have reports from members of the board, our legislative representative, Martha Rice, and Superintendent Green.
Enseguida vamos a tener miembros del Consejo que darán sus informes. Tenemos a Martha Rice y también el Superintendente Trevor Green.
Are there any reports from members of the board?
Hay algunos informes de los miembros del Consejo.
Raymond, I was on, kind of, we're all spending a lot of time zooming around these days. But I was on a call this morning with a group of folks from Eastern Washington. And among that group were members from the State Board of Education.
Raymond, hemos pasado bastante tiempo en reuniones por Zoom, por todas partes. Y estuve en una reunión con miembros de la Consejo de Educación del Lado Oriental de Washington.
A part of the discussion dealt with new permanent rules that the State Board of Education is considering in the area of graduation requirements.
Parte de la plática fueron las nuevas reglas permanentes que el Consejo escolar está estableciendo con respecto a las requisitas de grado así.
On August 27, at their meeting at 2:00 p.m., they will be making a decision about those rules.
El 27 de agosto, en la reunión que ellos tendrán a las 12 de la tarde, estarán tomando decisiones sobre esas nuevas reglas.
And they welcome comments from the public, as well as from any education leaders that are interested. And I have posted that information and those links in the chat box.
Ellos darán la bienvenida a comentarios del público y también animan a los líderes en la educación que tomen tiempo para hacer sus comentarios. He puesto los enlaces en la casilla para el chat.
Also in the chat box, I have posted a link to a work group that the State Board is putting together. And those folks are dealing with mastery of, student mastery of curricular areas.
También puse otro enlace ahí en la casilla de chat para de un grupo de trabajo del Consejo Estatal donde están tratando sobre la maestría estudiantil en estas áreas de trabajo.
As well, there is a link to another webinar that is being hosted by one of the student members of the State Board of Education dealing with racial inequities. I don't remember the date, but that information is posted in the webinar, in the chat box as well.
También otro enlace, es una junta por internet, que webinar, que un miembro estudiantil está dirigiendo con respecto a desigualdades raciales. No me recuerdo la fecha, pero eso se incluirá también ahí en la caja de chat.
Thank you, Martha. Was there anything else that you had, Martha?
Gracias, Martha. ¿Hay algo más que tenía usted?
I'll wait and see if other board members have any reports and then I'll move into the legislative report.
Okay.
Esperaré a ver si los demás miembros tienen algo que informar y luego entraré al informe legislativo. Está bien.
Any other board members have any reports today?
¿Algún otro miembro del Consejo tiene algo que informar hoy?
Sure, this is, Graciela, I want to share with this meeting, the board retreat that we had yesterday and just provide a brief overview of that meeting. The board met all day yesterday virtually and discussed a number of different things. The agenda included a discussion on the board developing a policy on, excuse me, on equity, excuse me. And we had a lot of really good discussion. Dr. Pimpleton walked us through several good discussion points. And so we feel excited to move forward on that work. We also discussed, we also did a review of some of our board policies and did a first reading of several policies that bring them up to date with, to be in line with our new strategic plan. I think that was the Zero Series policies, the mission, vision, and ENDS policy as well. So it was a really good meeting. We had a lot, a lot of really good discussion. And we still have a lot more work to do to finish up some of those discussions that we started during the retreat. But I just wanted to share that information with this group.
Quería compartir la información de que tuvimos un retiro ayer. Todo el día nos reunimos virtualmente. La agenda tuvo que ver con el distrito, el Consejo y también equidad. Hubo muy buenas pláticas. El doctor Pimpleton nos pudo traer información muy buena. Hizo reportes sobre las políticas que tenemos que implementar y también el plan estratégico que esté en línea con nuestra visión. Y muy buen trabajo que se hizo y se logró.
I just wanted to concurr with you, Graciela, that I believe it was an awesome retreat. And what I'd like to highlight is the dashboard and the ENDS report that Dr. Darling presented to the board. I just got excited about that because I like data and I like to track data. It just seems like it's going to be a lot easier to manage all that data and understand that.
Graciela, quisiera concordar con usted. Fue un retiro muy excelente. La doctora Darling nos pudo dirigir sobre todos los datos importantes. Y esos datos es algo que a mí especialmente me interesa. Gracias por eso.
Especially appreciate the more scientific approach to data and reporting. So I'm excited and looking forward to using that tool. So thank you, Dr. Darling. Appreciate that work there.
Especialmente aprecio el método científico de ver los datos y aprecio mucho eso. Gracias, doctor Darling, por eso.
I also did want to report on, I attended the annual Naleo, they call it the Naleo Virtual 37th Annual Conference. So it was a different experience, my first conference online. But it was, I think we kind of squished four days, five days into two. So I liked that approach, right? No travel, save a lot of money and not away from home. So it was a good conference. The conference, sorry, Mr. Chavez.
También quisiera informar sobre una conferencia virtual que tuvimos. Me gustó mucho la idea de no tener que viajar, hacerlo virtualmente. Se compacta cuatro a cinco días en dos y fue algo que disfruté mucho.
And so the conference really focused on COVID-19 and the impact on the economy, on education, of course. And one big thing was voting and how to make sure that everybody's out there voting. And actually, the census as well. So those were some of the highlights of the conference. But I did really enjoy the virtual part of it.
La conferencia se enfocó mayormente en COVID-19. Algunos puntos destacados, habló de la economía, la educación, el votar, que todos vayan a votar, y también el censo. Censo, eso fue algo que realmente me gustó mucho y especialmente el no tener que viajar.
I believe that Reverend Davis was also attending.
Yes, I was. I was also, go ahead, Jose.
Yo creo que el reverendo Davis también estuvo asistiendo.
I was also a part of that virtual conference and it was unique. And there were some great topics in the breakout rooms on COVID-19, restarting, the different tools that they're using in different areas of the country. And hearing that and seeing what we're doing, we are way ahead of the game. And it's so important to know that there, you know, we're doing a great job. And I shared with several of those who were leading groups. And they want to get in touch, they are getting in touch with Trevor to maybe present some of our work, what we're doing at the next Naleo meeting at NASPA.
Yo también fui parte de ese grupo, es una experiencia única. Los temas que me interesaron fue después del COVID-19, cómo vamos a comenzar, empezarla a funcionar de nuevo. Se presentaron buenas herramientas. Y es grato decirles que vamos muy adelantados. Estamos haciendo un trabajo fantástico. Pondré en comunicación con Trevor para que podamos darle seguimiento.
Yes, and I agree, Reverend Davis. I sat in on a workshop on reopening schools. And we heard from superintendents from like New York and Denver and, you know, some California, large, large districts. And they offered suggestions for reopening schools. And I'm thinking, we're doing that already. You know, our superintendent and his team have already thought of that. They're already implementing. So I just, it was good to see that the Yakima School District is ahead of the curve here in terms of, you know, helping our students and continuing to teach them through these challenging times.
Estoy de acuerdo, reverendo Davis. Yo estuve ahí observando como superintendentes de Nueva York, de Denver, de California, distritos bien grandes. Ellos estaban ofreciendo sugerencias y yo pensé, eso ya lo estamos haciendo acá. Quiero felicitar al Superintendente Green por el tremendo trabajo que se está llevando a cabo.
And I also sat in on a distant learning, COVOL distant learning, and hearing what they were doing in New York and Texas and Florida. And it was, it just blew my mind at how far advanced we are. And Cento, who is the Chair of Q, was narrating that piece. And he was texting me, saying, "What you guys doing that?" Give him Trevor's number. And so he and Trevor is connecting on that. And it's just amazing how advanced and how ahead of the game we are. And we, I give props to the administrators, teaching and learning, Andy, who's doing an outstanding job. They were talking about broadband and how Wi-Fi and how we are ahead of the game. And I thumbed up.
Sí, estuve también yo notando como estos métodos de la aprendizaje a distancia, lugares que como Nueva York, en Texas y Florida, ellos estaban explicando cómo estaban haciendo las cosas. Y me impresiona lo avanzado que estamos ahora. Y también me di cuenta como el presentador y Trevor se estaban comunicando. Por eso quiero darle halagos a la administración, a Andy, por el buen trabajo que están haciendo con esto de la Wi-Fi y la banda ancha.
All right, thank you. So if there's no reports from other board members, we're going to go ahead and move on to the legislative representative report, Martha.
Si no hay más reportes de otros miembros del Consejo, vamos a pasar al informe legislativo por Martha.
Thank you, Raymond. If you're following the news at all, you know that Congress is in recess at the moment.
Gracias. Está siguiendo las informes noticieros. Están dando cuenta que el Congreso está en receso ahora.
The House of Representatives have been called back for a, for a hearing on the Oversight Committee with the Postmaster General for the United States.
La cámara de representantes fue llamado para una audiencia que iban a tener con el encargado del servicio postal de los Estados Unidos.
Our representative is not on the Oversight Committee, but I believe that the entire House is being called back for potential legislation that may be coming before them next week regarding the post office issues.
Nuestro representante no forma parte de esa cámara, pero según entiendo, van a ser llamados de nuevo la semana entrante para que traten el asunto de la oficina postal.
In addition to that, there are a number of committees within the state legislature that are meeting on various issues, policy issues, as well as issues with broadband around the state and so forth.
Además de eso, hay varios comités que se están reuniendo de la legislatura estatal con asuntos de política y también asuntos de la banda ancha para el ímparís a través del Estado.
I can expand on that one-on-one if there are board members that are interested in more information.
Puedo expandir en ese tema personalmente con miembros del Consejo si desean más información.
And I think that's probably all.
Y creo que eso es probablemente todo.
Thank you, Martha. So we'll go ahead and move on to the superintendent report. Trevor?
Gracias, Martha. Vamos a pasar adelante en el reporte del superintendente. Trevor?
Thank you. Primero quiero agradecerles a los padres y las familias por su paciencia sobre los últimos meses. Y en este momento quiero presentarles a los líderes del distrito y las escuelas que son nuevos. Y vamos a hacerlo primero en español, luego en inglés. So I just shared that I am very happy to, for the patience and flexibility that we've seen over the last several months from our community and our families, recognizing that our families are the first teachers and the importance of having a quality teacher in every classroom. Aside from that, we're very proud of the leadership group that we have assembled and what that means moving forward. So I will now share some additions and some changes and would ask for translation services after. I guess I would introduce in English and introduce, make the introductions. And then I would ask, after the initial introductions, the new people to our district would say maybe about 30 seconds about themselves, make a comment, just some type of share out. So primero quiero compartir los cambios que han ocurrido adentro del distrito, aquí, las oficinas aquí en el centro y también en las escuelas de personas que ya tenemos en el distrito. We have the moves that we know of right now or that we have shared already some of these. Rob Darling has moved internally to our Deputy Superintendent role. Stacy Locke, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. Señor?
Tenemos ahora los que han entrado a los diferentes puestos. Rob Darling está en el, I'm sorry, I kind of phased that.
Deputy Superintendent?
El superintendente.
Stacy Locke, Assistant Superintendent of Operations.
Y Stacy Locke es Asistente de Superintendente de Operaciones.
Clint Endicott, as Executive Director of K-12 Leadership and Accountability.
Endicott, líder ejecutivo de kinder a 12 de responsabilidad académica.
Thank you. And then Pam OnSync is the Executive Director of School Improvement.
Pam OnSync es directora de mejoramientos escolares.
Becky Neeson, interim Executive Director of Finance.
Becky Neeson es Directora Interna de Finanzas.
And we have building changes, moves of Jamie Lee is now the principal at McClure Elementary. She was previously an assistant principal.
Y cambios en los edificios. Jamie Lee ahora es, did you say assistant?
Directora, fue un assistant.
Ahora es la directora de McClure.
And Brandon Hart moved from Adams to Whitney as an assistant principal.
Y Brandon Hart se mudó de Adams a Whitney como asistente del director de escuela.
That's Brandon Hunt. Thank you.
Yes, Brandon Hunt. Gracias.
Okay, so the introductions of our new leadership team members who are here this evening. It's phenomenal to have these 12 individuals to introduce. And it's exciting that at least five or six of them already have ties to our district. ¿Queréis compartir?
Sí, y es fenomenal introducir estos 12 nuevos individuos. Cinco de ellos han tenido enlaces con el distrito.
So first, we'll start out and again, I'll make the introduction. And then if you would say a few words, hopefully, everyone is here. We'll start out with Stephanie Casillas, the Assistant Principal at McClure Elementary.
Primero voy a empezar introduciéndolos y después pueden decir unas cuantas palabras. Stephanie Casillas, Asistente del Director de...
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me back. I am one of those that have ties to the Yakima School District. I grew up here and went through all of my education. So it's really exciting to come back as an assistant principal and be able to help our own community.
Gracias a todos. Gracias a todos, yo soy uno de los que tiene enlaces con el distrito escolar de Yakima, el regreso como asistente del director y aprecio mucho la oportunidad de estar aquí con todos.
Next, we have Jose Contreras, who is moving from a teaching role at Wilson Middle School to an assistant principal at Adams Elementary.
Enseguida tenemos a José Contreras, que está pasando de un papel de maestro en Wilson a asistente del director en Adams Elementary.
Thank you guys for having me. Yeah, my name is Jose Contreras and I'm excited to be here, supporting the Adams family here. I am born and raised here, I've loved it here. I've always wanted to teach here and I did. And now I'm in this new role and I'm excited to again help lead this building, but work with the families here in the community.
Gracias a todos, es un placer de estar formando parte de la familia Adams. Yo fui nacido y criado acá y siempre quería pasar a este lugar para enseñanza. Ahora estoy ayudando en el papel de lead.
I can't believe we had to translate that for Jose.
He made it easy for me, yeah, I guess.
No me doy cuenta, no puedo creer que tuvimos que traducir eso para Jose. Lo hizo fácil para mí, sí.
The third introduction is, we have a teacher moving from a teacher role at Adams to an assistant principal role at Nob Hill Elementary. Also a former student of mine, so I must have been very young when I had him as a student. And that is Craig Smith.
Go ahead, sorry.
Enseguida tenemos a uno que ha pasado del papel de maestro a asistente de director en Nob Hill Elementary. Él es uno de mis ex estudiantes, yo había sido muy joven cuando estuve enseñándole a él, pero es Craig Smith.
All right, yeah, so I am product of the Yakima School District. I have had the opportunity to teach fifth grade at Adams Elementary. And I am very honored to be the assistant principal at Nob Hill and look forward to serving our students and our families as we move forward.
Sí, yo tuve el privilegio de ser maestro y de dar clases el quinto grado. Ahora voy a ser el asistente al director de Nob Hill Elementary. Es un honor poder pasar a este papel y seguir adelante sirviendo a las familias.
We have another move from a position of, I believe, instructional facilitator was the role she had previously. She can correct me if I'm mistaken. But she was also an administrative intern last year under Mark Hummel at Robertson Elementary. And Carrie Pitts will now be the new assistant principal at Robertson Elementary.
Tenemos también otro que va movido de puesto de instrucción a facilitador. Tenemos como él pudo ayudar a Mark Hummel y ahora es Carrie Pitts que llega a ese puesto nuevo.
Well, I'm going to start by breaking the pattern. I did not grow up in Yakima. I moved here eight years ago. At this point though, the community of Yakima has fully adopted me and I have been thrilled to serve as the instructional facilitator at Robertson the last eight years. And I am so excited to continue serving students, staff and families at Robertson.
Yo voy a cambiar esto y voy a decir que yo no crecí en Yakima. Yo me mudé aquí hace ocho años, pero me han aceptado y adoptado aquí en esta área. Estuve trabajando como facilitadora de instrucción en Robertson y voy a seguir trabajando en Robertson ahora en este otro nuevo puesto.
And so thank you Carrie. Yes, we do recognize you as a part of Yakima for the time that you have been here. And now I'm going to the last person, I believe, on my list that grew up in this area. You probably heard his name previously by way of his father. But his name Doug Kaplicky is taking the position of principal at Adams Elementary.
Gracias Carrie, sí, la hemos aceptado como parte de nuestra ciudad. Ahora vamos a pasar al siguiente, que quizás reconozcan el nombre por el apellido de su padre, es Doug Kaplicky.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. Born and raised in Yakima, but have been gone for about 20 years. Logged in about 15 years of administration over the years, but super happy to be back. I can't thank the district team and the things that you guys are trying to do through these, you know, unique times, but super pumped to be working with my wingman, Jose Contreras, really talented guy. Craig Smith also was one of my former ballplayers at Davis High School when I started my teaching career and coaching career. So it's awesome to see Craig and it's just a great opportunity. So thank you for allowing us to be champions with kids. I have to say, Mr. Navarro, also been a pleasure working with Ms. Navarro on Mi Pobletto and the programs that we're working with J-Cup. So thank you for that opportunity too.
También quiero decir que yo fui nacido y crecido aquí en Yakima. Me fui por 20 años y 15 años estuve trabajando en la administración. Quiero darle las gracias al equipo del distrito, a José Contreras es uno que me da bastante apoyo, Craig Smith también, todos campeones. Gracias por todo el apoyo y espero seguir sirviendo a los niños aquí de Yakima.
So as you can see, we do provide opportunities for students, for students, for people to then move up in positions of leadership in our district. If anybody says that you have to come from outside our district to lead in the Yakima School District, they would be mistaken. And I think that we can see we have a lot of evidence for that truth in front of us tonight.
Trevor.
Podemos decir que estamos proponiendo oportunidades a personas aquí dentro de nuestra organización. Si alguien dice que tienes que venir de afuera de Yakima para poder avanzar en Yakima, pueden ver que eso no es cierto y queremos seguir dándole la oportunidad para que progresen y hagan bien su trabajo acá.
We have a couple more that have self identified in the chat box.
Oh yes, I was making sure that we recognized those that came internally and that moved up through our ranks. So now, thank you, but you're absolutely right, we certainly don't want to miss anyone. Now we get to present, or I get to present, the people that are coming from kind of outside our area into our district. And you can see the quality of people that we have from within our ranks to come from outside and be a part of the Yakima School District is something special. So for these people to be a part of Yakima, they've showed some very exceptional skills in being a part of what we are creating moving forward.
Gracias, sí, tenemos que dar reconocimiento a estas dos personas que... Y debo mencionar que personas que vienen de fuera de Yakima. Eso ilustra la calidad que tenemos en nuestro distrito, personas que quieren ser parte de lo que Yakima está providing para las familias y los niños. Y gracias por este apoyo.
We will start with our new assistant principal at Wilson Middle School, who comes to us from the Wenatchee area, but had been a lower valley kid growing up. We're excited to have Orlando Lara as our new assistant principal at Wilson Middle School.
Tenemos a Orlando Lara, que es el nuevo director de, asistente director de la escuela Wilson. Él viene de Wenatchee, estuvo aquí y apreciamos mucho su buena apoyo.
Thank you and good evening. I'm so happy to be back in Yakima, having grown up in Tappanish. And I'm entering my 24th year in education, all in middle school, yikes. But it's just a great opportunity here in Yakima. I'm really glad that I'm back into administration. I was formerly administrator in the Tacoma School District and then I was also principal for Washington Virtual Academy for a few years and found my way back to administration. And again, just happy and glad to be back in Yakima, back home.
Quiero darles gracias por aceptarme, este es el... Estuve, yo vengo de Tappanish, es 24 años estuve sirviendo en la escuela intermedia, middle school. Y es muy contento, tuve la experiencia de la escuela, distrito escolar de Tacoma, también la escuela academia virtual de Washington. Por eso estoy muy feliz de poder formar parte del distrito de Yakima.
I'm pleased to introduce another lower valley product. I actually went to school with this individual out in White Swan during my freshman year and followed her at that point up through middle school. She ended up working for the ESD and then comes to us now by way of Waluk. And that is Anna Marie Defoe, the principal at Discovery Lab.
Good evening, thank you so much. I am excited and honored to serve as Discovery Lab principal. My own three children went through that school as well as our graduates of Davis High School. It is a privilege to serve the staff there. And I would like to thank you to the administration for the wonderful Leadership Academy that you facilitated for us last week.
Quiero también felicitar a Anna Marie Defoe, que viene de, es un producto del Valle Bajo. Yo, de hecho, fuimos compañeros de clase en White Swan, sube adelante a la middle school. Ha estado en el ESD y luego ella dice gracias por la oportunidad. Es un placer de estar aquí sirviendo con ustedes.
And next, we will introduce, excited about our principal coming in to replace the wonderful person we had leave Robertson Elementary in Mark Hummel. We have, we're able to celebrate having TJ Bell Davis with us, coming to us from the west side. I think she's very excited to be in a very sunshiny place now leaving the west side and all the rain. And we're excited and thrilled about her being a part of the Yakima School District along with her two young daughters, who I hope will be joining her at her elementary school.
También estoy muy emocionado por presentarles a nueva directora, que es TJ Bell Davis, que ella ha venido del lado oeste donde hay mucha lluvia para un lugar donde puede disfrutar de los días soleados. Trae a sus dos hijas jóvenes, espero que ellas le vayan a unirse con ella en la escuela.
Good evening Board President Navarro, Superintendent Green, board members and YSD community members, hello. I'm welcoming myself, yes. Simply, I just want to say that I'm excited to bring the wisdom and experiences that I've gained throughout the years to YSD. And I'm excited to work with my fellow administrative colleagues and I'm excited to learn from the teachers. And I have been and worked and lived in some of the states that were mentioned earlier. But I am here now, I'm considering myself a Washingtonian, so I'm welcoming myself to the family. And I just want to say, thank you. I'm really excited to get to work. I'm excited about the things that we're going to do in remote learning. And let's just get to work, thank you.
Quiero darles las gracias por esa introducción. Estoy muy emocionada por venir y trabajar con ustedes. Me considero yo ya de Washington, me quiero yo misma dar la bienvenida y estoy emocionada por traer la experiencia y la sabiduría que yo he adquirido a través de los años en las universidades y colegios donde he estado trabajando. Y es un placer estar con ustedes, gracias.
What a tremendous example TJ Bell is. She welcomes herself to the district, I love that. I think we always have to welcome ourselves into our own spaces. So I appreciate that example of leadership and attitude that you demonstrated for all of us.
Qué maravilloso ejemplo TJ Bell, que ella está dándose a sí misma la bienvenida. Yo siempre estoy de acuerdo que uno tiene que estar feliz donde está y hacerlo más que puede donde se encuentre, gracias.
Our next individual is somebody that you've already met. He was able to present and walk our board through a process around focusing on equity. We're excited to have him as a member of our cabinet and excited about him bringing all of his knowledge and expertise to serve in the Yakima community. And that is Dr. Marcus Pimpleton, our Executive Director of Equity, Partnerships and Student Engagement.
También quiero darle, presentarles el doctor Marcus Pimpleton, que ha sido enfocándose también en la equidad y el conocimiento que él trae con nosotros, se los presento ahora.
Good evening, thank you for the welcome that I've already received from the board and from working with some of the other leaders last week. I'm just really excited to be a part of the work here in Yakima. I'm coming to this as a learner, hopefully able to help others in their work to think about how we create schools that help all students to achieve on high levels and to experience academic success, social most learning and be on the path to a really great life. So thank you and I'm happy to be here.
Pues gracias, buenas tardes a todos y estoy muy emocionado de formar parte del trabajo que se está llevando aquí en Yakima. Queremos todos reconocer el gran papel que llevan a cabo los estudiantes. Queremos ayudarles a que tengan buenos logros académicos y puedan tener éxito.
Next, I'm very excited to present our next, actually another doctor that we have among us. We have Dr. Andy Webb, who is our Director of STEAM Education. She and I crossed paths well over 10 years ago when we were actually going through our superintendent courses together. I'm very excited to have her now as part of our district, leading in the area of STEM and expanding it to include arts and becoming STEAM.
Enseguida tenemos otro doctor que queremos presentarles, el doctor Andy Webb. Él es el que está encabezando en educación STEAM. Hace diez años cruzamos, nos conocimos, estuvimos tomando cursos de superintendente juntos. También él añadió el arte al STEM para formar STEAM.
Mike, Mike, we're going to miss me, Thatcher, I think. So good evening, I'm very, very glad to be here. Very humbled at having the opportunity to work for the Yakima School District. As Trevor said, we have crossed paths before, very excited to be back and working with Trevor. I grew up in the Yakima Valley, I'm actually from Prosser, so I consider myself part of this valley and this is home for me. Starting year number 26, of course, I started when I was five. I just want to make sure that's very clear. And I'm very humbled at the opportunity to serve the students, staff and community in the Yakima area. And I'm really looking forward to putting STEM and STEAM as one of our strong forces. And really appreciate the fact that Yakima is so dedicated to the improvement of our students and our schools. And I really greatly appreciate this opportunity again to work for the Yakima School District.
De nuevo quiero mencionar que sí, pasamos, nos conocimos Trevor y nosotros. Estoy muy emocionada por venir y trabajar con ustedes. Yo provengo de Prosser, fue mi hogar, aquí es mi hogar. Y empecé, se puede decir cuando tenía cinco, ya tengo más de 20 años trabajando. Es una experiencia humillante para mí, formar parte de este equipo que va a dedicarse a mejoramiento de los estudiantes. El programa STEM y también STEAM, que es algo que creo yo que será de mucho beneficio.
Our penultimate position for the evening is one that is well needed during this time of distance learning. It is a director of, he is a director of digital and accelerated learning. We're excited about this position, not just because of where we currently find ourselves, but because we know that we will need this in the future regardless of whether we are teaching in distance learning or in the building, because we must continue to change and adapt with the times to create the best schools for our students. And this person, this individual is Arnie Lewis.
Thank you Superintendent Green. I have been a passionate Washington State educator for 33 years. I'm so excited about the direction that Yakima is headed right now. And I believe that we are entering a watershed moment for public education. As Superintendent Green said, that we are at a point where we can't turn back now. And I think this is such an exciting time to be part of public education. And I'm really excited to be a part of Yakima for that, for that change.
Tenemos ahora uno que es una posición muy importante. Le he ido a que, la situación en que nos encontramos con el COVID y esto es el aprendizaje acelerado digital. Y este es algo que demuestra que tenemos que adaptarnos y cambiar, tenemos a Arnie Lewis. Y yo soy muy apasionado, tengo 33 años en el estado de Washington, muy emocionado por trabajar aquí en Yakima. Me gusta mucho la dirección que Yakima está tomando. Es algo que no podemos cambiar, ya que hemos estado ajustándonos y adoptándonos a este mundo que está en cambio. Es un placer trabajar aquí con ustedes.
And then the last individual, I do not believe he is here this evening. It's Manuel Orozco, who is coming to us from Tappanish, where he had served as the Director of Maintenance and Operations. He is resuming that same role or assuming the same role here for Yakima. So we do welcome Manuel Orozco, but I don't believe that he is present at the time, at the time.
El último individuo es Manuel Orozco, que viene de Tappanish. Él fue el director de mantenimiento y operaciones, estará ahora trabajando en Yakima. Aunque no creo que está presente Manuel Orozco... estará ahora trabajando en Yakima, aunque no creo que está presente Manuel Orozco, pero queremos darle la bienvenida.
I would just close by thanking the individuals who were presented this evening for stopping in. We're not expecting you to stay for the entire meeting, but it is so joyous for us to see the great leaders that are in front of us and know that our team really does represent a wide breadth of knowledge that comes to us from so many different places. And we thank each of you for choosing the Yakima School District to be a part of and for becoming part of the lives of our students, of our staff and our community.
Finalmente quisiera darle las gracias a todos los individuos que se han unido con nosotros, pues esperamos que se quede para toda la reunión, pero es fantástico tener a líderes como ustedes que vienen de tantos diferentes lugares a Yakima para ayudar con el esfuerzo que hacemos para que los estudiantes de Yakima triunfen.
And with that, Director Navarro, back to you.
Thank you Trevor. On behalf of the board, I want to welcome all our new administrators to the Yakima School District. We are very fortunate to have great leaders as Trevor indicated, so welcome, Mr. Chavez.
En nombre del Consejo quisiera darle la bienvenida a todos los nuevos administradores que vinieron aquí al Distrito Escolar de Yakima. Como dijo Trevor, estamos muy emocionados por tener tan buena ayuda aquí.
And also want to congratulate, congratulate all our those that are moving into new positions and with new responsibilities, congratulations.
También quiero felicitar a todos aquellos que están pasando adelante los nuevos puestos y sus nuevas responsabilidades, los felicito.
And the board, I know that I speak on behalf of the board when we say that we look forward to working together with you and our superintendent, we anticipate that all those years of experience, those, the education, your talents and skills are going to be very beneficial to not only our students, 16,000 students of the Yakima School District, but for each other, right? Our staff, our teachers, you know, and other administrators as well. So, want to thank you once again for choosing the Yakima School District. And congratulations Trevor, you continue to build an outstanding team for the school district. And we know that we're going to see great improvement coming up, so.
En nombre del Consejo quiero darle las gracias a todos estos que están uniéndose y esperamos con ansias trabajar juntos, con todos sus años de experiencia y también nuestro superintendente que está haciendo todo lo posible por poner esto en orden para los 16,000 estudiantes del Distrito Escolar de Yakima. Felicitaciones Trevor, para que continúe con este esfuerzo tan bueno que está haciendo para beneficio de nuestras juventud de Yakima.
And just a side note Doug, I did have the pleasure of working with your father at Heritage University. So, awesome guy, so I could just imagine if you're a chip off the old block then we have the right guy at the right place, so nice to meet you virtually.
Para que lo sepa Doug, yo tuve el placer de trabajar con su papá en la Universidad de Heritage y fue una gran experiencia y si el hijo es algo como el padre, sin duda que será un placer trabajar con usted también.
Thank you, so we're gonna go ahead and move on next on the agenda. And again, if you choose to move on with your evening, we won't be offended. So, we do appreciate you stopping by for, to spend some time with us, thank you so much.
Gracias y vamos a pasar ahora a la siguiente parte de la agenda, si tiene que pasar adelante a hacer sus otros quehaceres. Gracias por unirse con nosotros por este tiempo.
Cabinet members better stay.
Señormente vale más que se queden.
So next on the agenda, we do have the consent agenda. The consent agenda enables the board of directors to efficiently deal with matters that have been delegated to the superintendent, but by law must be approved by the board.
Enseguida tenemos la agenda de consentimiento, estos son asuntos que se han permitido por ley, pero tenemos que nosotros tener la aprobación del Consejo.
Items on the consent agenda are voted upon as, as one block and approved with one vote. Any board members, any board member has the right to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate discussion and or actions.
Los miembros del consentimiento tienen derecho a hacer una moción para que se apruebe y también pueden remover algún asunto del consentimiento para que se tome la acción.
The consent agenda does consist of the following items, approval of minutes for July 28, 2020.
La agenda de consentimiento incluye los siguientes artículos, la aprobación de la agenda de consentimiento de julio de 2020.
Approval of personnel actions, budget status reports for July 2020, and notification of approval of warrants for July 2020.
La aprobación de acciones del personal, también reportes del status del presupuesto para julio de 2020 y también la notificación de algunos cheques que se escribieron para julio de 2020.
Are there any board members who wish to remove any, an item from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and action?
¿Hay algún miembro del Consejo que desee remover algún artículo de la agenda de consentimiento para que se dialogue o se tome esta acción?
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that the board of directors approves a consent agenda as submitted.
Ya que veo ninguno, puedo escuchar una moción para que el Consejo de Escolar mueva para aprobar la orden como está presentada.
So moved. Okay, moved by Norm, second by Martha. Discussion?
Se hizo la moción por Norm, secundado por Martha, diálogo.
Seeing none, Jennifer, please conduct roll call vote.
Ya que no hay ninguna, Jennifer, por favor haga la llamada de la lista para la votación.
Donald Davis Jr.?
Yes.
Gracias, la bienvenida.
Yes.
Martha Rice?
Yes.
Raymond Navarro Jr.?
Yes.
Norm Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0, thank you very much.
La moción fue aprobada por todos, muchas gracias.
And next on our agenda, we do have a number of action items. And the first one is the approval of the 2020-21 SRO agreement with the city of Yakima and the Yakima Police Department in the amount of 688,456 and 97 cents. Mr. Superintendent, would you like to, do you have any opening remarks, please?
Enseguida tenemos la aprobación del acuerdo de 2020 a 21 SRO con la ciudad de Yakima y el Departamento Policial de Yakima en la cantidad de 688,456 dólares 97 centavos. El superintendente Trevor tiene algunos comentarios sobre ello.
I would like to thank our Assistant Superintendent of Operations Stacy Locke for overseeing the development and inclusion of families and community in the process of going through the contract.
Quisiera darle gracias al Superintendente de Operaciones Stacy Locke para asegurarse que las familias están incluidas en este proceso.
And I would like to thank the board for the healthy conversation that we enjoyed last month in talking about the contract and being able to respond to the numerous questions that were brought up at that time specifically in a long, a long David session with Director Navarro.
Y también quiero darle las gracias al Consejo por esta conversación saludable y larga que tuvimos el mes pasado y también darle sugerencias y conversación con el Superintendente Navarro.
We are opening in distance learning, which would mean that we will not have our security in place until such a time that we do return to school in buildings.
Estamos abriendo el aprendizaje a distancia, que significa que no tendremos la seguridad colocada para regresar a tiempo en los edificios.
And we are, and we know that that will grant us some more time to continue to assess the way that we address issues across our district that have to do with safety and security of our students and our staff members.
Y sabemos que eso nos concede más tiempo para evaluar y tomar acción sobre la seguridad de los estudiantes a través del distrito y también para el personal escolar.
And knowing that this is the first time, I think that Stacy is presenting, I will pass the baton to her to share anything more about the agreement and the request for the board as well.
Sabiendo que esta es la primera vez que va a presentar Stacy, voy a pasarle la palabra a ella para que hable y también diga lo que está sucediendo.
Thank you Superintendent Green, board members. So, the contract is much more robust than it has been in the past. And we have updates as required by the new legislation as well as being able to address a lot of data collection, which will give us information about how the police are operating within our schools and with our students and staff. There was a parent committee that saw the final, parent-student community committee that saw the final draft. And I do have approval from that committee to move forward with this particular contract. And again, it addresses the concerns that you shared with us back in June when we first brought the original 20-plus-year-old contract to the table. The, what is really significant too in this, in this development of this contract is that it will address training connected to child and adolescent development, trauma-informed approaches to working with youth, recognizing and responding to youth mental health issues, the educational rights of students with disabilities, the relationship with disability to behavior, and best practices for interacting with students with disabilities. Also collateral consequences of arrests and prosecution and pathways for youth to access services without court or criminal justice involvement. Local and national disparities and use of force.
Could the interpreter have a little pause, please?
Oh God, I'm sorry, I was on a roll, thank you for interrupting me.
Quiero darle las gracias al Superintendente Green por esta oportunidad y tenemos mucho que trabajar en este contrato, el contrato es mucho más robusto que lo ha sido en el pasado. Se basa en recolección de datos, en cómo la policía va a operar en las escuelas y también el personal escolar está ayudando con este borrador final y un comité que estuvo aprobándolo nos ha dado la aprobación para que lo llevamos adelante. Y el contrato que hemos tenido por 20 y más años ha sido algo que necesita ajustarse. Estamos recibiendo las maneras de poder entrenar a los niños y también a los adolescentes para que ellos puedan desarrollar su educación de una manera que tomen consideración, por ejemplo, las discapacidades de los niños y cómo pueden ellos tener un método educativo que sea adaptado a esas discapacidades, okay.
Thank you, local and national disparities in the use of force and arrest of children.
La desparejo que es un uso de fuerza tanto en autoridades locales y nacionales.
De-escalation techniques with youth, de-escalation techniques when working with youth or groups of youth.
Maneras de aplacar o bajar situaciones peligrosas cuando se trabaja con los jóvenes o adolescentes.
State law regarding restraint and isolation in schools.
La ley estatal que tiene que ver con restringir o aislar a individuos en las escuelas.
Bias-free policing and cultural competency, including best practices for interacting with students from particular backgrounds.
Métodos libres de prejuicios para tratar con los estudiantes que vienen de diferentes antecedentes y maneras libres de fuerza para ayudar a aquellos estudiantes que tienen diferentes antecedentes.
In the federal Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, better known as FERPA.
Y la ley federal de derechos familiares que también se conoce por sus siglas en inglés es FERPA.
So, outside involvement is new and I think very productive this year and eye-opening. These 12 areas really will train police to see students through a different lens. So, we are excited about that. The other thing this document does is delineate roles of administrators and school resource officers, which I think is very imperative coming forward. This, this contract needed a major overhaul and it received one. And the police and the city are working to approve it on their side and we've come together to collaborate on it.
También esta involucración de aquellos de afuera es algo que nos abre los ojos. Estas nuevas 12 áreas para capacitar a la policía para que ellos puedan ver los problemas mediante una lente diferente. Es algo que puede delinear los papeles tanto de la administración escolar como los oficiales de la policía. Y estamos esperando trabajar con el Departamento de Policías y también con la ciudad de Yakima para imponer estos cambios para mejorar.
Do any members of the board have questions?
¿Hay algún miembro del Consejo que tenga alguna pregunta?
I conclude my comments, thank you.
Así concluyo mis comentarios, gracias.
I couldn't, I couldn't get my mic to unmute, but there it goes. I have, I have one question, I'm really, first of all, I'm really pleased with what I see in that document. I think that really will, will strengthen the relationship and also put some real expectations on the qualifications that, that our officers have. I think one concern I didn't see and we talked about it a bit before is sometimes of those seven officers, at times we may need a substitute officer. And my understanding is that the substitute is simply appointed by the chief of police. And there's no guarantee of the level or degree of training that a substitute might have. So, I don't know that that's a conversation we need to have with the police chief to make sure that, that when he does put a sub in that they have, if not all of the training, a significant portion of that amount of training, so that he's not putting somebody in as a sub that's unprepared to either deal with kids or understands the dynamics of schools and that kind of stuff. That would be my only concern.
La única pregunta que tenía es, primeramente quiero decir que es grato ver este documento y lo que se ve ahí para fortalecer la ayuda que tenemos de los oficiales. Veo que hay siete oficiales que van a ser asignados y si acaso necesitan un sustituto. Veo que el sustituto es nombrado por el jefe de la policía. Quizás queramos saber que el jefe sepa que cuando tiene que usar un sustituto, que ese sustituto tenga toda la capacitación, la mayor parte de la capacitación que los demás reciben para asegurar que pueda hacer su trabajo de manera adecuada.
Director Walker, we did address that with YPD and there is a clause in there and I don't remember exactly where it's at. But anybody that's going to replace him, and maybe Bob can help me out if he remembers, I think after 10 days, anybody that's going to be a substitute for 10 days or longer will have that training. But they, they asked if in the interim for these one or two-day substitutes that they were not required to have every officer trained in those 12 areas. So, it is being addressed and I think it's much better than it ever was.
Okay, thank you.
Sí, hablamos con el Departamento Policial de Yakima y quedó claro que cualquiera que quieran usar como reemplazo o sustituto por 10 días recibirán esa capacitación, pero si es por un día, uno o dos días no es el caso. Pero hemos estado trabajando y está claro que lo que necesitamos nosotros de ellos, está bien, gracias.
Additionally, we're working to package that training. It's about a 15-hour training and if we can package that together so that it's in video somewhere that they can access, we can do a better job of ensuring that they definitely have had all that training.
Y además de eso estamos tratando de hacer un paquete de ese entrenamiento, la capacitación de 15 horas. Si se encuentra en un video así ellos podrán tener más acceso, más fácil a esa capacitación y más probable que lo vayan a recibir.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members?
¿Alguna otra pregunta? ¿Alguna otra pregunta o comentario de los miembros del consejo?
Gracias.
Yes, thank you. Stacy, can you tell us... So let me back up. So also agree that this contract is much stronger than the contract that we've had in the past. So thank you for all of your work on that. Can you tell us a little bit more about the community committee that you brought together? Can you tell us how many people run the committee? And considering that poorly managed SRO programs tend to impact students of color more adversely than other students, can you tell us how many people of color were part of that committee?
Stacy, estoy de acuerdo que el contrato es mucho más fuerte que lo ha sido en el pasado, pero nos puede decir un poco más en cuanto a ese comité? ¿Cuántas personas formaron el comité? Sabemos también que el impacto a los estudiantes de color puede ser más fuerte si acaso no hay miembros de color en el comité. ¿Cuántos miembros en el comité son de color?
So, the committee was small this year. As you know, this is the first year, this is a requirement to put together. There were nine members on that committee. There were, I think, four Caucasian, two African-American, and three Hispanic.
El comité ha sido más pequeño que en años pasados. Son nueve miembros. Cuatro caucasios, dos afroamericanos y tres hispanos.
Thank you. And then one other question. In our board review a month ago, or whenever that was, when we had the in-depth discussion about the contract, one of the things where we discussed was the use of force with students. And I thought that we talked about including some language that I had shared from the ACLU. And I didn't see that language and make it into the contract, and I may have missed it. So please correct me if I missed it.
Otra pregunta. Vimos una plática respecto al control o fuerza. Y de acuerdo con ACLU, si acaso esa información en el contrato nos puede informar de ello.
So, when we worked on that, we looked at the language that the state had put out, and WASC had put out in regard to policy language around SRO programs. And we believe that it was part of that mixed language in that statement moving forward. So we went with WASC language at that point. Bob, can you recall anything else around that?
Cuando trabajamos en eso, el programa SRO también hay políticas que tienen que ver con ello y el lenguaje de eso parece que se incluye. Bob, ¿recuerda usted algo más sobre ello?
Yes, Stacy, I do recall some language that we added on the first page of the agreement under mission and purpose.
Sí, recuerdo que está en la primera página bajo misión y propósito.
So the second paragraph talks about absent a real and immediate threat to student, teacher, or public safety. That's language taken from the ACLU white paper. So that's where we incorporated some of that language.
El segundo parrafo habla de que si no hay una amenaza inmediata, la persona o los estudiantes. Y ahí es las palabras que sacamos del... Lo incluimos ahí.
That basically divides that absent any real or immediate threat, police aren't to do anything and to leave it to the school to handle it.
A menos de que haya una amenaza inmediata e inminente, están ellos a que lo dejen a la escuela que se encarguen de ello.
And that's also where the role responsibilities are very well delineated in there, where the use of force is not the first thing that the administrators go to. It's the school and the administrators have a responsibility first in the situation. It's only officer-driven if there's an imminent threat.
Y ese se delinea específicamente en las responsabilidades de los papeles. El uso de fuerza no se encargan ellos, más bien es la escuela y la administración que se encarga de ellos a menos de que haya una amenaza inminente de fuerza o daños.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Graciela.
So I guess I would just like us to consider maybe strengthening. When I look at section 7.11, it talks about physically, and I think this is the duties of the SRO. I guess it's under investigations. Police intervene, or I'm sorry, physically intervene and/or restrain students and/or non-students in a safe manner when necessary. And so in terms of the students, I guess I feel like that could be strengthened a little bit more and provide a little bit more guidance to clarify, I guess restraint and how that happens to students in the school. And going back to the ACLU document, they have some wording that I think is really strong and provides more guidance and clarity around what can and can't happen. And it uses that same kind of beginning sentence that we just saw in the mission and purpose section that Bob Noe just reviewed. And so that is... So this is suggested language that I would like to see in the contract. Again, that provides more clarity around use of force with a student. So that wording is absent a real and immediate threat to student, teacher, or public safety, an SRO officer shall not use... An SRO shall not use physical force or restraints, including handcuffs, tasers, mace, or other physical or chemical restraints on a child or on a student. Feel like that would strengthen and clarify for both the district and the officers that are involved, the things that are specifically not okay to use on a student.
También lo que se incluye en el contrato, como dice el punto 7.11, lo que son las responsabilidades del SRO es más bien la investigación. La policía no debe restringir a los estudiantes. Necesitamos más guianzas sobre eso. De acuerdo con el documento ACLU, ahí tiene unas palabras muy fuertes y claras sobre lo que puede y no puede hacerse. Como dice, "A menos de que haya una amenaza inmediata", los policías no deben esposar, no deben usar algún tipo de químicos para controlar a los estudiantes. Parece que necesita aclararse eso.
Stacy, is it too late in the game to add language like that to 7.11?
Stacy, ya para añadir idioma así como es el punto 7.11.
We can add the language. It would need to be negotiated with YPD. And they may have some pushback for what's required of them in their training and how they're required to respond to certain situations. But we can put it in there and have them take a look at it and see if they agree to that language.
Sí podemos añadirlo. Tendríamos que negociar con el departamento policial de Yakima. Ellos tendrían que explicar lo que se requiere de acuerdo con su entrenamiento, pero tendríamos que hablar con ellos. Sí se puede añadir.
I have a question.
Tengo pregunta.
If we were to insert the language at this late stage of the discussions, do we run the risk of overshooting the end of our current contract? Granted, they're not going to be in our schools. But do we run that risk and jeopardize something by running over the end of the current contract?
Si acaso vamos a tratar de incluir esas palabras a esta etapa tan tardía de las discusiones o diálogo, ¿no estaríamos excediendo entonces nuestro contrato?
In answer to that, there is that possibility. I think what we have to take into consideration is that they are not our employees. They are hired to do a specific job and that we have to be careful about how we... How we're telling them what to do with our kids and if it blurs into what their job responsibilities are to do with law enforcement. I can share with you that we have come miles in the twenty years and I can show you some horror stories when I was principal at IC. And the system is not like that anymore. If we were working with officers that saw kids in the light they did fifteen, sixteen years ago, I couldn't promote a contract with the city of Yakima Police Department. But it's changed so much over the years that they're willing to put people in there that really like kids, care about kids, and want to be relationship builders and community builders with our students. And I'm concerned about running the risk of the pushback at this point if we go back to the table with new information in that contract and ask them to approve that.
En respuesta a su pregunta, hay la posibilidad de que esto se pueda... Ellos puedan resistir o rechazar el que nosotros pongamos esas nuevas palabras. Ellos en realidad no son nuestros empleados sino que se les ha contratado para que hagan un trabajo específico. Si nosotros le decimos cómo van a tener que hacer ese trabajo y ellos entonces tienen que poner en práctica la manera que ellos han sido capacitados. Siendo directora de IC, le puedo dar historias de terror, de cómo hace quince o dieciséis años los grupos son muy diferentes. Ahora estamos promoviendo el formular relaciones y dar formación a la comunidad.
Graciela, ¿se siente usted suficiente fuerte en cuanto a que se incluyen estas palabras en este contrato? ¿O sería algo que pudiéramos trabajar para que se incluyan en contratos del siguiente año?
So I do feel strongly about it. I guess I'd anticipated when we had the discussion about a month ago that when I talked about the use of chokeholds in schools and whether that's allowed, I thought we would have stronger language in the agreement. And my concern really comes from, you know, hearing these horror stories in other districts of things that happen where SROs perhaps are not used in an appropriate way. And I don't think that's happening in our schools, but I think it's an important thing to clearly outline in a contract the kind of what the expectations are. I don't think it's unreasonable as a district to dictate what can happen to our students. And I think the wording in that language that I read, absent a direct threat, I think that really clarifies in my mind when an officer can use force and when they can't. And so, you know, if we ask and they say no, and that's going to jeopardize the contract, you know, we can work on that for next year, but I think I'd like us to at least ask.
Suficiente fuerte en cuanto a esto para volver a negociar. Pero yo de acuerdo con la plática que tuvimos hace un mes donde se habló de los oficiales que no deben usar llaves para ahorcar a un estudiante. Mi preocupación es cuando oigo las historias de terror en otros distritos escolares. No creo que sea razonable que el distrito escolar tenga que preocupar por esto. Las palabras que dicen "y no hay una amenaza directa" es cuando el oficial usa la fuerza.
So I can't share...
Okay, go ahead, Stacy.
I was going to say, I can share with you that the YPD is reviewing chokeholds and restraints and that that's up to the cap level that they're looking at that. But there's been no information shared that they have addressed and changed their policy around that yet. So I would be happy to include that language and go back to sharing that with them and ask if they would approve the contract with additional language put forth.
Puedo compartir con el departamento de policía de Yakima estar revisando esto, disponer de llaves para ahorcar o restringir a los estudiantes, pero no puedo asegurar de que ellos han hecho los cambios. Sí puedo hablar con ellos y decir que vamos a añadir esas palabras para ver qué tienen ellos que decir.
They do apologize. Bob and I did look through the white paper and chose some of the information out of there to include with WASC's policy recommendations. But I guess we just didn't go far enough, so I apologize.
Sí les pido disculpas. Bob y yo miramos esos papeles, pero quizá no lo miramos profundamente para darnos cuenta de eso, sí por eso les pido disculpas.
Thank you, Stacy. So this item is up for action this evening. And so the requested action is that...
Would you like me to share that, Raymond?
Sure.
So I would just add that I don't know if... I don't know if an apology is in order. I appreciate the hard work that has gone into this contract and taking it from where it was over the last twenty years and make the tremendous leap and improvement that we have over the last couple of months is phenomenal. And I compliment the board for having this conversation and pushing it in a way that you feel is necessary. That's what this process is about.
Yo creo que esta acción que se requiere no necesita pedir disculpas. Aprecio mucho el trabajo duro que han hecho en este contrato y han hecho un gran adelante y es fenomenal. Por eso aprecio el trabajo que han hecho ustedes.
It's important never to let perfect be the opponent of better. We do try to make a better product, but I do appreciate, as I said, the opportunity to improve even further.
Es importante no dejar que algo que sea perfecto sea el oponente de algo mejor. Es bueno esforzarnos, pero esto ha adelantado a lo que ha adelantado.
And currently, the requested action is that the board of directors approves the 2021 SRO agreement currently stands with the city of Yakima and Yakima Police Department in the amount of $688,456.97.
El artículo de acción que actualmente está ante nosotros es la aprobación del acuerdo de 2020 a 21 de SRO con la ciudad de Yakima y el departamento policial de Yakima en la cantidad de $688,456.27.
So the board does have some options here. That is the requested action. So we could proceed with that motion. Or if Graciela, if you have a different motion, that's our second option. And I believe, and anybody can correct me if I am incorrect, that we could perhaps table this for further discussion. I know that's going to put us up against some deadlines and some other kind of things that Stacy will be having to deal with. So just wanted to put that out there. Those are our three options I believe that the board has at this time.
Creo que las tres opciones que el consejo tiene ante nosotros es aprobar esta acción o quizás también pudieron la segunda opción como mencionó Graciela y quizás la tercera opción sería ponerla en espera para tener más diálogos sobre ello, pero eso puede tal vez llevarnos hacia los límites del tiempo que nos queda.
Could someone remind me what the deadline is on this?
¿Puede decir alguien cuál es la fecha límite para esto?
Stacy?
So the contract is effective July 1st. The other one was closed the beginning of the school year. They're employed for 180 days that children are in school. Thus, the addendum at the back, since we have remote learning starting. So I just don't know at this point whether the YPD took it before the city council to pass in its current form. So we'll just have to address that. They're employed for 180 days that children are in school. Thus, the addendum at the back since we have remote learning starting. So I just don't know at this point whether the YPD took it before the city council to pass in its current form. So we'll just have to address that.
El contrato tiene el primero de julio es cuando empieza la vigencia. Se terminó el año escolar, 180 días mientras los niños están en la escuela. Entonces si el Departamento Policial de Yakima ha llevado eso ante ellos para discutir.
Is it possible, so I guess I have a question in terms of what, how we can design a motion. Is it possible to work in, work logic process in a motion? So like an if then else, so, you know, potentially make a motion to approve with a modified language. And then if the contract is not able to be modified this year, then move forward with the language as it is. Does that make sense? Or is there not an appropriate way to make a motion under Robert's Rules of Orders to do that?
Creo que la pregunta, ¿cómo se puede diseñar la moción? ¿Sería posible el proceso lógico en la moción para aprobarlo con las modificaciones? Y si el contrato no va a ser modificado para seguir las reglas de Robertson en este asunto.
So board members, as appointed officials can make, and part of the board can make any motion that he or she chooses to make. So it's just where it comes down to it is the vote, right? So if you can get a second and majority, then we move forward. If not, then we would need another motion. So that's, I guess that's how that works. So if you wanted to make a motion, that's, you can do so. But I have, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chavez.
Miembros nombrados del Consejo pueden hacer cualquier moción que quieran. Lo que yo creo es que va a decidir una segunda moción o si va a ser aprobado por la votación. Entonces creemos que vamos desde ahí.
So Graciela, so I really appreciate your questions and your remarks. We are indeed in a time of change with law enforcement in our communities. And, you know, considering the current civil rights movement, I really appreciate your questions and your line of thinking and making sure that we're being sensitive and we're addressing the needs of our community. So while saying that, I do also understand that we're under a tight deadline that the contract or the agreement would need to be renegotiated, so to speak, with Yakima Police Department. And that also involves, as we heard, the Yak, not that mean, excuse me, the Yakima City Council. And then I personally believe there's enough in there to to ensure that our students are going to be safe and their rights will be, will not be violated in terms of, in regards to law enforcement in the Yakima School District, Mr. Chavez.
Graciela, realmente aprecio sus preguntas y comentarios con respecto a esto. Los tiempos están cambiando y en vista de los movimientos civiles y esto es algo bueno y aprecio mucho estas preguntas y comentarios, pero también estamos bajo una fecha límite bastante apretada. Y sí, vamos a tener que volver a negociar con el Departamento Policial de Yakima y también con el Consejo, la Ciudad de Yakima. Esto es algo que tomar en consideración también.
Are there any other questions or comments, or Graciela, do you have any further?
¿Algún comentario, pregunta? Graciela, tenías algo más que decir.
Director Navarro, if I may, Graciela, is it 7.11 that you're most concerned about? Can I ask for clarification?
Si me permiten, Director Navarro, Graciela es en la sección 7.1 el que le puede recibir aclaración.
Yes, that was a...
Stacy, just briefly.
So if I could share with you, although it doesn't change the language, they're required, they have a form that they need to fill out that comes from YPD if they put their hands on any of our kids. And restraint, and we had one of those last year. Well, it was a short year, but we had one at Washington Middle School that occurred that we have in our system. So it's, I hear exactly what you're saying, but I can assure you that it does not hap, it only happens on occasion when it's been deemed necessary. So just so you know that that is an area that there is a focus on.
Solo puedo mostrarle que solo tuvieron una ocasión que se requiere por el Departamento Policial de Yakima que ellos documenten cuando sucede esto. Y uno ocurrió en la escuela Yakima Middle School y eso es lo que se encuentra en nuestro sistema. Y eso solo ocurre en ocasiones cuando, como ya se especificó, hay una amenaza inmediata.
Raymond?
Yes Martha?
I too appreciate Graciela's attention to this. And I don't disagree that that language might bring value to the contract. However, at this late date and not knowing whether or not this has gone to city council and their legal folks, I guess it would, it would be my suggestion that we can, that we approve this. Staff has heard our concerns and suggest that negotiations start sooner rather than later and with YPD and seek to include that language in next year's contract.
Sí aprecio la función que Graciela ha dado a eso. No estoy en desacuerdo con que esas palabras traían valor a nuestro contrato, pero sin saber si el Consejo de la Ciudad de Yakima ha estado dialogando sobre esto, yo sugiero que aprobemos esta y que las negociaciones comiencen con el Departamento y que esos cambios se hagan para el contrato del año entrante.
Thank you Martha. Are there any other board members that have any questions or comments regarding this discussion?
Gracias Martha. ¿Hay algún otro miembro del Consejo que tenga una pregunta o comentario sobre este diálogo?
Okay.
I think, sorry, can I just say one more thing? So considering the discussion, recognizing that it is late in the game and Stacy, I appreciate you sharing that information that the instances of restraint happening and under the current contract really are very, very low. I think I'd be comfortable approving as is. And then, as Martha said, beginning to work on the revisions earlier in the process for next.
Con más consideración que, y la plática que se está haciendo ahora que estamos ya bien tarde en este juego y que las restricciones que se usan son muy raras, yo estaría también de acuerdo en aprobar este contrato y trabajar en los cambios para el año entrante.
Yes Martha.
I move approval of the contract for the 2020/2021 school year with YPD as submitted.
Second.
¿Yo hago la moción para que se apruebe el contrato de 2020-2021 del año escolar según se presentó?
Thank you. So it has been motioned that the Board of Directors approves the contract agreement with the city of Yakima Yakima Police Department as submitted and seconded by Reverend Davis. Discussion?
Ya se hizo la moción de que se apruebe el contrato de 2020-21 con la ciudad de Yakima y el Departamento Policial. No puedo, por, Reverend Davis, ¿alguna pregunta?
I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. I know that there was, some of it was driven by legislation that passed last year. But I think the vast majority of it was driven by the need to make the existing, the past document better. And we should always try to move forward better. I know that Stacy put in a lot of hours and included comments from input from the community and negotiations with the police department. And I just want to express my appreciation for the work toward making this a better document and strengthening our partnership with YPD.
Quiero dar mis palabras de aprecio por todo el trabajo que se ha invertido en esto. Sabemos que la legislatura hizo la promoción del año pasado, pero algunos impulsos han sido por hacer mejor el documento del pasado y hacer mejores, bueno. Aprecio todo el trabajo que Stacy metió y es mucho trabajo tanto por el apoyo de la comunidad como del Departamento, gracias.
I want to thank Stacy for all the hard work and I know it's been tedious. And it's been, I know, and I want to say, as a pastor, I've been working with YPD on this new civil rights movement of chokeholds and restraints. And they are doing a series of trainings and they're about to put out a policy that's going to benefit the district as well as the community. And I understand what Graciela is saying. Graciela, there's good points. But I think we'll be surprised at what's going to come out in a new policy on chokeholds and restraints. And then we can like implement this for next year's contract. And then it's all going to align. So I, Graciela, thank you for bringing that up.
Como un pastor, yo quiero decirles que he estado trabajando mucho con el Departamento Policial de Yakima con respecto a estas llaves de ahorcar y también restricciones. Se ha hecho un movimiento para que se construyan nuevas políticas. Y Graciela trae muy buenos puntos y esta nueva política creo que va a ser para mayor bien. Pero espero que notemos que van a haber políticas nuevas que van a surgir de todo este esfuerzo.
I would just like to echo that as well. I really appreciate Graciela's concern with making that language a little more specific, even though safety is a part of the language. But I think Stacy, that can just also just be, I would vote to approve this contract as it is, but I would hope that would be a continuing discussion with this police department as they're having discussions and be sure to bring up with them that we do have a concern about that and that we want to work with them really closely on that to ensure safety of our students.
Quiero hacer eco de esas palabras y me aprecio lo que Graciela ha dicho porque la seguridad es gran parte de las palabras que se están escritas ahí. Yo vote para aprobar el contrato tal como está y tendremos que hacer las mejoras para el futuro. Tenemos una preocupación hacia cómo se está tratando y cómo se tratarán los jóvenes.
Trevor?
I would be happy to have Chief Murray come and speak during our superintendent report at a later meeting. In addition, he has informed me that the policies are under major review at this time. That is all that I can say about what is going on, but I would emphasize major review.
Thank you.
Yo estaría muy contento en tener al jefe Murray para que venga y hable con respecto a las políticas, pero sí puedo decir que se están haciendo mayores revisiones.
So I just want to also thank you Stacy and also Bob for all the work you did on this agreement and being patient with the board, especially with me. I appreciate that. And also for involving the community and getting community feedback during the process. But more importantly, also listening to the students that are involved in our local civil rights movement and hearing their concerns. And I understand that they actually reviewed the contract or the agreement and provided their approval. So I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done and Bob as well. Thank you so much.
Yo también quiero darle las gracias a Stacy y Bob por este, todo el trabajo que han hecho sobre esto. De acuerdo que nosotros también, gracias por la paciencia del Consejo, especialmente gracias por mí. Ustedes han involucrado a la comunidad y también a los estudiantes que están involucrados en los movimientos locales de derechos civiles. Todo esto ha sido muy bueno y gracias tanto a Bob y Stacy.
Any final comments, questions?
Algunas finales, preguntas.
Okay, Jennifer, could you please conduct roll call vote?
Jennifer, ¿cuál es la votación por llamar la lista?
Donald Davis Jr.
Aye.
Graciela Villanueva?
Yes.
Martha Rice?
Yes.
Raymond Vara Jr.
Yes.
Norm Walker.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much for this awesome discussion. I really appreciate the concerns and our questions and just a discussion that's focused on the safety of all our students in our community. So we appreciate, I appreciate that. So we're going to go ahead and move on to our next action item is approval of the K5 English Language Supplemental Curriculum in the amount of $299,500 for the 2020-21 school year. Mr. Superintendent, could you tee this one off for us please?
La moción que ha aprobado, gracias por todo el esfuerzo que han tomado. Vamos a pasar al siguiente artículo, es la aprobación de las, el currículo suplemental de idioma inglés K a 5 en la cantidad de $299,500 para el año 2020-21. Superintendent, sus comentarios, por favor.
Doctor Darling?
Yes, thank you and I sure hope this conversation is as spirited as the last one. Otherwise, I'll feel slighted.
Y espero que la conversación esta sea tan animada como la última o voy a pensar que me están haciendo menos.
I appreciate your delivery. All right, so we are asking for the board to approve a supplemental curriculum and contract to awarded to Imagine Learning for the cost of $299,500 for the 2020-21 school year. This program is used specifically for multilingual learners. It is an online platform that students can use during the school day as well as at home. And it allows the teacher to track and add work in English and in Spanish to address the individualized needs of our students.
Estoy pidiendo la aprobación de el currículo recomendado suplementario en el idioma inglés en la cantidad de $299,500. Esto es para el beneficio de los niños que son multilingües, están aprendiendo en casa. Esto será presentado tanto en inglés como en español.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
¿De alguna pregunta o comentario es el Consejo?
I appreciate the continued focus on making sure that our students who are transitioning to English have the supports that they need to be successful, especially in the current situation that we find ourselves where, you know, bless their little hearts, they're dealing with remote learning as well. And to try to do that and learn English at the same time has got to be really difficult. So any support that we can provide to them, I really appreciate.
Aprecio mucho el enfoque continuo de, para estos estudiantes, especialmente los que están haciendo la transición a aprender el inglés. Ellos necesitan el apoyo y es bueno saber que lo van a tener para que tengan éxito, especialmente en el ambiente actual de aprendizaje a distancia. Ellos, y compadresco de ellos, necesitan esta ayuda.
Doctor Darling, I do have a question in regards to this curriculum. As the district moves into a dual language approach, will this have any connection to that or will it be used for that process?
Tengo una pregunta, doctor Darling, a medida que el distrito hace la transición a la enseñanza en doble idioma, ¿tendrá esto un efecto en eso o será añadido a eso?
This will continue to be a supplemental curriculum that we use to support our multilingual learners. But our dual language students will have a core curriculum in Spanish as with their English counterparts.
Esto será un currículo suplementario que estamos usando para aquellos que están aprendiendo en doble idioma, pero los que aprenden en doble idioma tendrán algo que será una parte complementaria.
Any other questions or comments?
Algún comentario por el consejo.
Okay, see none. Let's see. I want to thank you, Dr. Darling, for all your work on, on this. Appreciate it. Um, at this time, I would entertain a motion that the board of directors approves the adoption of the recommended K through five, fifth or K five Imagine Learning Supplemental Curriculum in the amount of two hundred and nine nine thousand five hundred for the two thousand twenty twenty one school year. Move, some, some move.
Moved by Reverend Davis and.
Second.
Second by Norm. Discussion?
I'm assuming Babal English just won't do the trick, huh?
It, uh, no.
Okay, I thought I'd introduce some discussion for you, Rob. He's trying. Seeing no other discussion, Jennifer, could you please conduct roll call vote?
Ya que no hay más diálogo, Jennifer, por favor, puede hacer la votación por llamándole la lista.
Donald Davis Jr.
Yes.
Graciela Vinaueva.
Yes.
Martha Rice.
Yes.
Raymond Navarro Jr.
Yes.
Norm Walker.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero. And once again, thank you, Dr. Darling, for all your work on this, on this contract.
Gracias, la moción fue aprobada a cero. Gracias, doctor Darling, por todo el trabajo en este contrato.
So we're moving right along here. So our next item, action item is permission towards special education, classified related services and special related services to include therapy and assessment services in the areas of speech, occupational, psychology and physical therapy contract for the two thousand twenty twenty one school year. I think that's gonna be Dr. Darling again, but I want to give our superintendent an opportunity to tee this one off.
Enseguida vamos a ver la concesión para, I'm sorry, I missed that one. The interpreter has a question.
Yes.
Is there still someone present that I'm interpreting for? I have no way of knowing this and I just want to make sure. I'm starting to get a little burnt out.
Yeah, we are. It's, it's a rather long meeting, so how can we help you?
Uh, maybe if you pause a little more, I'm, I'm, I'm not keeping up.
Okay, okay. We can pause after maybe a sentence or two and then.
I appreciate.
Translation. Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Doctor Darling.
Doctor Darling.
Uh, yes, so thank you. Um, and this was initially when I went to submit this, it was kind of confusing to me, so I'll explain a little bit of the background on this. We are asking that the board grant permission to award special.
Okay, Dr. Darling, listen. We can help our interpreter a little bit, so.
Esto fue poco confuso para mí, por eso yo pedí un poco de aclaración y voy a compartirlo con ustedes.
Do we still have, do we have anybody who's watching this live?
I don't know how to look for that. I don't, I think tech is the only one that can determine that. We can't see that from where we are.
Okay. No, si, Jose.
Vamos.
All right, um, so we are requesting that the board grant permission to award special education classified related services and special related services to include therapy, assessment services for speech, occupational, psychology and physical therapy for twenty 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 one school year.
Estamos solicitando que se provean servicios de educación especializada con respecto al habla, terapia, también evaluaciones para el año escolar veinte, veinte a veinte veintiuno.
Part of the process required getting several RFPs from several different companies.
Parte del proceso requiere obtener varios RFPs de varias diferentes compañías.
And when we are, when we are, as we go throughout the entire school year, we will use most of these companies.
Y a medida que cursamos el año escolar entero, utilizaremos la mayoría de estas compañías.
And the services we anticipate using will total one, one million eight hundred thousand dollars.
Y los servicios que vamos a utilizar el total es un millón ochocientos mil dólares.
And I think that is a typo in the board doc because it says one thousand eight hundred dollars and then a dot instead of a comma. It should be a comma instead of a, un punto.
Y creo que hay una, un error, tiene un, un millón ochocientos, debe haber una, una coma y unos cuantos ceros adicionales.
And I have one other question in the document. In, in looking through the list of providers, there's one called Speech and Listening. And I'm not aware of that as a name of a provider in Iaquim. My understanding is it's the Speech and Hearing Clinic. Is there a new provider or is that a typo or?
I'm, I'm.
Okay, translation.
Pongo una pregunta porque ahí el proveedor dice Speech and Listening. Y si acaso hay otro proveedor que el cual no sé.
Yes, thank you, Norm. You are correct. It is Speech and Hearing.
Okay, thanks.
Sí, sí, Norm, es Speech and Hearing. Está bien, gracias.
Do we have any other questions for board members?
Algún otra pregunta para los miembros del consejo.
Okay, so at this time, then I would entertain a motion that the board directors approves the adoption. So moved.
Que el consejo de, hagan la moción para aprobar la, esto, la adopción. Se ha hecho la moción.
Okay, so motion by Norm, second by Reverend Davis. Discussion?
Por Norm, secundada por Reverendo Davis. Diálogo?
Seeing none, Jennifer, please conduct roll call vote.
Ya que no hay, Jennifer, por favor, haga la lista de, la lista para la votación.
Donald Davis Jr.
Yes.
Graciela Vinaueva.
Yes.
Martha Rice.
Yes.
Raymond Navarro Jr.
Yes.
Norm Walker.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero. So we're gonna go ahead and move along to our next action item. I know it's getting, it's, it's getting to be a long meeting. It's getting late. We're about nine o'clock. And we do only, we're getting to the end of our agenda, so I appreciate everybody's patience and understanding. I know having to translate English and Spanish, it can be quite cumbersome and it could make our meetings rather long. So I appreciate everybody's patience and for hanging in there. And again, we only have two more items to process. So next we do have, sorry.
Quiero darle las gracias a todos por su paciencia. Yo sé que tener que interpretar esto se hace más largo. La moción fue aprobada por todos. Vamos a seguir, quedan nada más dos artículos más en la agenda.
So next action item is resolution eleven point nineteen point twenty designation of auditing and investment officers.
La siguiente es la resolución once punto diecinueve punto veinte, designación de auditoría y también oficiales de la inversión.
And we do have Becky Neeson presenting today. Trevor.
Becky Neeson estará presentando. Trevor.
In the interest of expediting things, I'll just turn it over to Becky.
Por el interés de hacer las cosas más rápidas, le dije la palabra Becky.
I think she froze.
Pero que se con.
Becky, can you hear us?
This is a annual requirement from the Iaquim County Treasurer. It just designates who. Yes.
I think we're losing her, Trevor.
All right, so the background information is that RCW twenty eight A three twenty three hundred authorizes the board to delegate authority to an employee of the school district to direct and authorize the Iaquim County Treasurer to invest funds not required for immediate necessities.
El código revisado hace de cuarenta y ocho a tres veinte, trescientos autoristas, el consejo, para que designe a uno que invierta los fondos que no son relacionados directamente con la tesorería.
This is an annual resolution regardless of change that is required.
Esta es una resolución anual con respecto al cambio que se requiere.
The requested action is that the board of directors approves resolution eleven point nineteen point twenty designation of auditing and investment officers.
Lo que está ante nosotros es la aprobación de resolución once punto diecinueve punto veinte, la designación de auditoría y oficiales de inversiones.
And this would have you listed as board members as part of the designation of auditing and investment officers.
Y esto lo designa ustedes como miembros del consejo como parte de la designación de auditoría y oficiales de inversiones.
Thank you, Trevor. So I just want to paraphrase the resolution.
Gracias, Trevor. Quiero solo parafrasear la resolución.
And so just providing approval authority that for Rebecca Neeson, Monet Denise, Susan Faith and Kristy Kirk to be designated as auditing and investment officers of the district for this for September first two thousand twenty through August thirty first two thousand, two thousand and twenty one.
Solo designa a los personas nombradas para que sean los oficiales de, designados para la auditoría para el año dos mil veinte a dos mil veintiuno.
So at this time, I, if there's not any questions, I would entertain a motion that the board directors approves resolution eleven point nineteen point twenty designation of auditing and investment officers.
Este momento si no hay preguntas, pido que se haga la moción para aprobar la resolución once punto diecinueve veinte, designación de auditoría y oficiales de inversiones.
A motion by Reverend Davis, seconded by Norm. Discussion?
Moción por el reverendo Davis, secundado por Norm. Diálogo?
Seeing none. Jennifer, please conduct roll call vote.
Ya que no hay, Jennifer, por favor, haga la votación por la, la lista.
Donald Davis Jr.
Yes.
Graciela Vinaueva.
Yes.
Martha Rice.
Yes.
Raymond Navarro Jr.
Yes.
Norm Walker.
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much.
Estamos fijos que la aprobada a cinco a cero. Muchas gracias.
So we've reached the, yes, Mister Murrieta.
Sí, señor Murrieta.
Uh, I just communicated with Andy Gonzalez who let me know that we only have fifteen people attending this meeting, which uh, Jose doesn't have to interpret any of this, the more people who are on it are us.
I, I realize, well, don't celebrate too early because that, that's just one of the reasons to translate is for our live audience, but also this meeting is being recorded so people can go back and watch it and if they, I, I appreciate Anthony, your, your, your efforts, so.
Well, Jose, I tried.
He tried.
I owe you one. Vamos, pero tenemos que seguir interpretando.
The good thing is we are to our, we have reached our last action item. It's a rather lengthy one, so we'll try to expedite this one. So our next, our final action item is approval of resolution eleven point nineteen point twenty adopting the two thousand twenty twenty one budget. And as always, I'll give Trevor the opportunity to tee this one off.
La última es la resolución once diecinueve punto veinte, que es la adopción de el presupuesto de este año. Le voy a dar la palabra a Trevor para que empiece.
I'd like to thank Becky Neeson for her work in preparing documents and resolution for board approval this evening.
Quiero darle las gracias a Becky Neeson por su trabajo en preparación de los documentos para aprobación del consejo para esta tarde.
It has been a monumental task for her over the last month us to make this very transparent and budget that we can stand behind as a district.
Ha sido una tarea monumental para ella y algo de beneficio para nosotros. Es bueno que ella puede estar respaldando al distrito.
Becky, the time is yours.
Becky, tienes la palabra.
Thank you Superintendent Green. Am I, am I unfrozen now?
You're good, Becky. Thank you.
Can you see me?
Gracias, Superintendent.
No?
Yes, we can, here.
Ya lo escuchamos.
Am I? Okay, good. So, so sorry. Um, yeah, so, um, thank you, uh, board members. What we bring to you tonight is the um, resolution to adopt the two thousand twenty one budget. All prescribed in the law has been addressed. Um, we have had our public hearing back on August third and there has been no comments or questions that have come forward to change the budget. Um, and so the administration recommends you adopt the budget as presented in this resolution and I'm happy to answer any questions prior to taking action.
Translation, Becky.
Lo que le traemos al consejo es que estamos haciendo la petición que adapte todo lo que se ha presentado. El tres de agosto tuvimos la audiencia pública y ya que no hubo ni comentarios ni preguntas, se lo dejamos a ustedes para que aprueben el presupuesto tal y como está.
Are there any questions for board members or comments this time?
Una pregunta del miembro de los consejos o comentarios a este momento.
Okay, seeing none. Again, I'm gonna paraphrase for, because it's a rather lengthy resolution. So this is the translation, please.
Ya que no hay comentarios, lo que voy a hacer es parafrasear, ya que esta es una resolución bastante voluminosa.
And this will be posted, right, Mister Superintendent, on the website, our district website?
Esto se va a publicar, ¿verdad?, Superintendent, en el sitio web, sí.
So this, this is the Iaquim Public Schools Resolution ten point nineteen point twenty adopting the two thousand twenty twenty one budget.
Esta es la resolución del distrito escolar de Iaquim de diez punto diecinueve punto veinte, la adopción de el presupuesto del año escolar.
So our Washington Administrative Code requires our, our board of directors to meet for the purpose of adopting the budget for the district for the ensuing fiscal year.
El código administrativo de Washington requiere que nuestro consejo escolar se reúna para dialogar y hacer la aprobación del presupuesto para el año escolar.
And as part of the process, public notices were published and a public hearing was held on August third, two thousand and twenty.
Y como parte del proceso, se dio aviso al público y se condujo una reunión pública el tres de agosto de dos mil veinte.
During that public hearing, the, the board did uh, have a public hearing, excuse me, to accept of a comment testimony on written materials.
Durante esa audiencia pública, se dio la oportunidad para que el público diera sus comentarios o preguntas al respecto.
And so, uh, the process has led to the final appropriation levels of expenditures for funds and I'll go ahead and explain those here in a second.
Y el proceso nos llevó a hacer la presentación de los gastos y fondos y voy a explicarlos en un segundo.
Uh, each fund for two thousand twenty twenty one as follows.
Y cada fondo para dos mil veintiuno tal y como sigue.
So under the general fund, it's two hundred fifty four million four hundred and seventy four thousand eight hundred and sixty two.
Bajo el fondo general son doscientos cincuenta cuatro millones. Bajo el fondo general son doscientos cincuenta cuatro millones, cuatrocientos setenta cuatro mil ochocientos sesenta y dos.
Associated Student Body Fund is eight hundred fifty seven thousand and ninety nine dollars.
El fondo de los estudiantes asociados es Uh, could I have that number again, please?
Eight hundred and fifty seven zero nine nine.
Ochocientos cincuenta, ochocientos cincuenta siete mil cero nueve nueve.
Under the debt service fund, nine million five hundred and fifty thousand.
Bajo el fondo de servicios de deuda, nueve millones quinientos cincuenta mil.
Capital Projects Fund, three million, two hundred and fifty thousand.
El fondo de servicios capitales, tres millones doscientos cincuenta, doscientos cincuenta mil.
And Transportation Vehicle Fund is one point seven million.
Y el fondo de transportación en general es uno punto siete millones.
And the resolution also outlines for your financial forecast and I'm not gonna, there's quite a, quite a few numbers there, so we'll let you, if you, if you choose to go in and read that on your own.
Y también aquí se da un anticipo de cuatro años financiero y hay bastantes números ahí. Si usted desea, puede ir a encontrarlos usted mismo.
And so, and the resolution also states that be resolved that the Board of Directors, the Yakima School District Number Seven Yakima County, Washington approved in a meeting thereof held August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Y en la resolución también habla que se, fue aprobado en el condado de Yakima, siete, el dieciocho de agosto de dos mil veinte.
Operating transfer from general fund to debt services fund up to seven hundred thousand.
La transferencia operativa del fondo de, a máximo de setecientos mil.
Adopted by the Board of Directors of Yakima School District Number Seven.
Adoptado por el Consejo Escolar del Distrito Escolar de Yakima, número siete.
Are there any questions for board members or comments?
¿Pregunta o comentario de los miembros del consejo?
Okay, so at this time, I would entertain a motion that the Board of Directors approves resolution ten point nineteen point twenty adopting the two thousand twenty twenty one budget.
Ah, escuche la moción para adoptar diez punto diecinueve punto veinte, la resolución de el presupuesto de dos mil veinte, dos mil veintiuno. Ya ha hecho la moción.
Motion by Norm, second by Reverend Davis.
Secundado por Reverendo Davis.
Discussion? Seeing none. Jennifer, please. Go ahead, Martha.
I just want to thank Becky and her team for pulling this together and presenting it to us. It's a tremendous amount of work. I don't know that we even know how much work is behind all this, but this is a, a significant document and I appreciate the, the effort that goes, that goes to make this happen.
Solo quiero darles gracias a Becky, su equipo, por el, todo el trabajo. Esta es una cantidad tremenda de trabajo. A veces no nos damos cuenta cuánto trabajo se lleva, pero es un documento muy significativo y aprecio todo lo que han hecho.
Other discussion?
Más diálogo?
Yes, thank you, Becky, for all your work. Becky, thank you for your work and for, for that of your team as well. Thank you.
Gracias, por todo su trabajo y también de su equipo. Gracias.
Jennifer, please conduct roll call vote.
Jennifer, por favor, puede hacer la lista.
Yes.
Donald Davis Jr.
Thank you.
Yes.
Graciela Villanueva.
Yes.
Martha Rice.
Yes.
Raymond Navarro Jr.
Yes.
Norm Walker.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero. Once again, thank you, Becky, and thank you to all those who were involved in putting together this budget for our next year. So that brings us to the end of our agenda, right? How about some, some hands, right? Yes.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Mister Chavez. Thank you for hanging in there. We appreciate you being with us today. Appreciate the service you provide to our Spanish-speaking community, so thank you for, for that. So with that, I'm just gonna, without further delay, we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting. It was good seeing everybody. Thank you once again for hanging in there. And have a great rest of your evening. Meeting is adjourned.